Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. My name's Fiona Lemmonson, GP Clinical Chair of Liverpool CCG, and I'm chairing the Health and Wellbeing Board this afternoon. Can I welcome you all to the meeting? This is a virtual meeting which is being livestreamed on the council website. And just to begin to acknowledge the fact that earlier this morning, we were given some new restrictions for Liverpool City Region and some other areas in the country. I know that our council teams and our health teams, including the council's communications team, are working very hard at the moment to make sure that we support our population, to understand, and to support them to follow the new restrictions. And there will be lots more information coming out about that later today. So can I ask the board to note apologies have been submitted by Mayor Anderson, councillor Paul Grant, Steve Warholton, but we have Claire Morgan attending from Loth. Very welcome, Claire. And apologies from Sarah Thwaites at Liverpool Health Watch. Are there any other apologies?
Chair, it's Tony Reeves speaking. I'm here. I'm not apologising for being here, but I may have to leave. There's quite a lot going on at the moment, as you'll appreciate, and I may have to leave the meeting. And if I do, I'll try to come back later.
Thank you. That's completely understandable. Thank you for that. Okay. Just one further announcement before we get into the meeting proper. Can I advise that this week we received notice of resignation from the board from Gideon Benthoven. Gideon has had to miss a number of meetings recently to take care of his wife. And due to this and other commitments, has advised he is unable to commit to attending future meetings. Gideon, when Chair of the PCT, helped establish the board, this board, back in 2011, when he chaired it in shadow form and through its transition into its statutory function now. On behalf of the board, can I thank Gideon for his involvement and wish him all the very best for the future? Item number two.
Could I just make a comment? And just to say a massive thanks to Gideon. I've known Gideon for many, many years and well before I was a councillor. I've been on the council since 2002, and I'm sure Richard looks back at that time as well. And it goes back to Gideon's real fight for race equality across in that. And also his time as he was Labour leader at one point, when I first became a councillor, leader of our group. And he's always been incredibly supportive. He's got a fabulous wife as well, Mark, if you're out there. And in terms of the health and wellbeing agenda that Gideon really led on for the city as Chair of the PCT, that was a move forward that put us in a much, much better position in terms of understanding how health is related to what we do, where we are outside, the green agenda, the environment, all the Forest School work that he's been doing, all the life science work he's been doing. So it'd be lovely, Gideon, if you are out there listening, I have no idea, loads of love, but do keep in contact because to be able to have him feeding back on that would be really great. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. I completely agree. It's certainly some legacy that he has left. Thank you. Okay, item number two, declarations of interest. Are there any interests to declare? Well, thank you. Item number three is minutes of the last meeting. The minutes of the meeting held on the 30th of July are on pages 1 to 13 of the Agenda Pack. So can I ask, are there any accuracy issues or other matters arising that board members want to raise? Councillor Corbett?
So just in terms of matters arising on page 12. If you remember, we accepted the Marmot report in terms of us joining the Marmot community with Cheshire and Merseyside. And what we resolved at the board was that we would agree to further investigate how the recommendations within that report that we looked at last time can be implemented locally to tackle the current unacceptable health inequalities in Liverpool. I co-chair with Bishop Paul a group called Fairness and Tackling Poverty Group, and that has about 25 people from right across the city on that one. And we discussed last time we met a few weeks ago whether actually we could help out with that and be act as some form of advisory group to the Health and Wellbeing Board. And that would mean that the Marmot Principles and Social Terms of Health was always on the agenda for this board, which would be crucial. And so. If the board agrees that we can become some form of advisory group, but it becomes formal in the system, which should be quite useful, I think.
Thank you. Any comments or further remarks on that? Thank you. I think certainly exploring that as an option and bringing it back to the board is very welcome. Very, very important topic for us to be considering at this board. Thank you. Any other accuracy or matters arising? No, can we agree the minutes? Yep, thank you. See if you nodding. Feel free to nod. Thank you.
We agree, Chair.
Thank you. Item number four is question time. Can I advise that no questions have been submitted to the board on this occasion? Which means we can move into our next section, which is the COVID-19 System Response Section. And there are four reports under this heading. So item number five is Lessons Learned from COVID-19. This report on pages 14 to 25 provides the board with a summary on the lessons learned in Liverpool from the first wave of the pandemic through to August, please.
Thank you, Chair. So we have carried out a review of the first wave and looked at our response and looked at responses elsewhere to come up with a summary of lessons learned. We have seven lessons which are all covered in the report, and I will just touch on the seven lessons briefly. First one is rapid response is key. It's really important to be brave and bold when making decisions and to get on with them, not delay. And we did that in a number of different ways. For example, around looking at our care homes, protecting our vulnerable patients, making sure that we understood what the data was showing, where the risks were and reacting to that. Secondly, that there's no single magic bullet or single action that will help us in the fight against COVID. Issues that we need to be really clear when we're communicating about. So that is obviously hand hygiene, social distancing, use of face coverings, but it is also protecting our vulnerable groups, making sure that we are looking after vulnerable groups and access to medicine and food supplies and so on, and making sure that people are all sticking to the appropriate guidance. Thirdly, transparency is key to having and maintaining the public's trust. And that's around things like making sure we share intelligence, acting upon it. Obviously, as we know, there were some delays early on with us having access to all the local data. We do now, and we are responding appropriately. We also have very strong communications in place that explain exactly what we're doing and why we're doing it with our community. Lesson four, picking up on that community theme, is the importance of community engagement. So not doing things to our population, but doing things with relation. And I think the best demonstration of that was during the Princess Park outbreak and the way we galvanised our local communities to respond and very successfully get on top of the virus in a relatively short period of time. Lesson five is around the distribution of infectious diseases following gradient. So we know that the most deprived part of our population is worst, and that's therefore crucial in shaping the type of response that we need to do against COVID and other infectious diseases. Lesson six is around public health threats being deadly. And we know that over a period of time, we have disinvested in public health, systematic public health across the whole country. So there's a lesson there really about making sure that we invest in public health, in population health, in preventative measures systematically. That's not just the public health team. It's embedding preventative activities in everything we do. And then finally, lesson seven, Chair, is around COVID-19 being a global health security issue. The fact that COVID-19 impacts both on health and wellbeing and also on economic activity. And you cannot separate the two. And that actually demonstrates therefore the importance of a wider determinants approach, a health and all policies approach, application of Marmot Principles, application of inclusive economic acts.
Thank you, Matt. Do we have any questions?
Yes, thank you, Fiona. To Matt or anyone of our expert panel I can see on the screen in front of me. I just want to ask questions about, first of all, the section which relates to social gradient. Because it seems to me that this section is now outdated. I've been watching the daily figures ward by ward, which have been coming out, which shows that, for example, my ward and Walton and Chilwell, places like that, which are arguably the wealthiest parts of the city, have now caught up and in fact overtaken many of the poorer areas. So is the social gradient still applying? Do we expect to go back to social example? All the effects of those people able to go away on summer holidays has subsided back into the normal community. So my first set of questions are about the social gradient. And I've got some more about the engagement.
Chair, I can pick up on the social gradient question if that's okay. So actually, I think councillor Kemp is referring to the distribution of positive cases of coronavirus throughout the community. But I think the point about the report is it's not just around positive cases. It's around the impact of those positive cases. So out of those positive cases, which ones translate into worst health outcomes? Which ones result in hospital admissions? Which ones then result into deaths? And that, for me, is where the social gradient impact would occur. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. I was going to say.
I'm sure that's right. But again, this is an important part of our messaging process because people are now picking up the wrong message, which isn't the message that matters just given us. So I think we need to think about how. And this leads on to my second question, actually. So it segues in nicely. How do we explain individual circumstances for communities, types of communities and age groups in something which is very complex when the government is failing to do it? You mentioned in the report, and I think you're absolutely right, to say the excellent work done in Liverpool eight, or Princess Park particularly. And that was very much replicated in Leicester, where when the council took on the challenge and used the people who could talk the right languages in the right way with the text, you could bring the curve down in a way that the government couldn't. So are we taking these lessons to the government? And how does that relate to what's happening at the moment with the, what I consider to be the miserable failure of the national track and trace system?
Chair.
What then, Matt?
Chair, I'll start and then happy for anybody else to come in on that. I guess what I would say is the lessons, bed those lessons to the best of our ability within our local practice. And that's the point about us learning from the first wave to make sure that our response in the future is as good as it possibly can be.
Thank you. Tony Reeves?
Yeah, just without getting into the politics of this, just to say that we've got a range of different vehicles into government on this. And we and others across the country are feeding in good practice. And there is interest in the practice on the ground in places like Liverpool now. Clearly, there are judgements to be made about which things are done centrally and which things are done locally. And you can all make your own minds up about which things have worked really successfully and haven't. I'm not going to get into that. But certainly the good practice that we have and the lessons we've learned in Liverpool, as other regions and other cities have been doing as well, clearly do get fed into civil servants. And I've no doubt because, for example, around the whole business grant system, we got direct contact from ministers with the ideas we put forward. And the discretionary business grant system came about as a result of that. So there is some listening going on in the centre. But I don't want to get into the politics of it. I'm sure councillor Kemp wouldn't want me to either.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councillor Corbett?
Just to say that the, for picking up Richard's point about looking at the social terms of health and Matt's point about the actual impact on individuals and where obviously there's very high levels of people with COPD, et cetera, then obviously that impact is going to be greater, even if the numbers, Richard's point about the numbers is the balancing that with the actual deep impact. And one of the things that we picked up from our Fairness and Tackling Poverty Group last week was the importance of the council being able to have the right level of data from DWP. We've been trying this for a long time. So myself and Martin Youngen, hopefully with Tony as well, will push them directly for getting all the data that we need off DWP so we can get into knowing exactly whose, where, when. As the numbers, particularly on universal credit, increased dramatically and continue to increase dramatically, the levels of chronic poverty have a really negative impact on anybody that does become actively infected with COVID. And basically, tax means that people have been trying to move from, you know, three-bed property to a two-bed property. If they're then also trying to work from home, if they then get a job and they're in cramped conditions, that is not good for transmitting COVID and also the layering within the families. And then the last thing to say is that the local welfare schemes, so Liverpool got 0.9 million out of the 63 million that was given out by the government support schemes. And that money that we got, that 0.9, was meant to be the first tranche. There's meant to be four of those. So again, just to note that we're pushing very, very hard on that. And I'm working with some of the big charities on this as well to keep pushing on that because we had an increase of 200% at one point in April in terms of people needing emergency funds so they could pay for food, for electricity, for clothing. So we'll keep pushing on that.
Thank you. Any other, I can't see any other hands. You also mentioned councillor Kemp about our messaging. And I think my own view is that regardless of where the impact or where the numbers are high or low, I think we should be sending a message out that everybody has to come together. And it's the community spirit that is so strong in Liverpool that will actually make the biggest difference if we all follow the rules for each other. Did you have other questions or are you done? Thank you. Any other questions on lessons learnt?
One other one about digital access. Because if we go back into another major lockdown more than we are already, digital access is absolutely crucial. And whether that message needs to get pushed back up to government as well as all the other messages that we're doing. Otherwise, people are out of contact. And just to welcome Matt's point about working with, not for or at, communities and seeing communities as real, genuine assets and with their own local wisdom. So we have local wisdom in Liverpool and we have local wisdom at community levels and within groupings, within communities. And without that, we're in the dark. And with that, we actually might just about be able to, not sort, but get through this together.
Completely agree. Are we done on that? Any other final questions? No. Thank you, Matt. So we then move to item six, which is Children and Young People Services Directorate Response. The summary sheet on page 26 and 27 outlines the wide range of activities delivered over recent months by the CYP Directorate to make sure that critical services were kept as well as the response faced as a result of COVID. And can I invite Steve Reddy to speak to this, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'm conscious the last meeting you had a detailed report from Melissa and Matt's team on some of the impacts of COVID on children and families. So we thought it might be helpful and hopefully reassuring to provide some of the information on the activity we've been doing in children's services. I'm very conscious, given the time, single agency view of our activity. But it goes without saying that across the partnership, all these activities are massively supported by partner agencies. If you'll just indulge me for a second, I'll just pull out a few things from the couple of page briefing. So on education, obviously, I think throughout the crisis, the value of education and the role our schools play in community is very clear. But some of the things we've been doing to support education by the council and partners is we created the hub system at the start of the lockdown to make sure we could support key worker and vulnerable children. We coordinated PPE provision. We shared good practice that we found locally and nationally on home learning. As part of the reopening of schools, we supported all the schools' risk assessments and management plans. So I think I'm just really proud of all the effort of all the staff. And I think what's interesting is from a really fragmented education system. And we could discuss all day the politics of education and how it is quite fragmented. There's been a real coming together of everyone across the city to support education and get schools up and running again. Across social care, as you would expect, all the key safeguarding services to respond to risks. We've done some interesting things by providing court space for family courts. And latterly, we're actually going to be using the council chamber for some family courts because there has been somewhat of a backlog on discharge of children from care because of the courts due to COVID. We've received some national recognition because of our contribution to support unaccompanied asylum seeker children, which many of you will know from the reports, there's still a huge pressure in that area. And despite COVID, we've carried on recruiting foster carers, which is absolutely key. Over the page, in terms of our early help services, I can't talk highly enough about the children's centres across the city who remained open throughout COVID and have gone over and above doing things like supporting the free school meal voucher supply, providing free sanitary products, which used to be provided in school as well, developing a whole range of support for families and parents, both in the centres, but also lots of online and virtual support as well. Our targeted services for young people, the youth justice have maintained contact with many young people and particularly in terms of managing high-risk cases as well. And again, using virtual tools and developing virtual online offender offender behaviour programmes as well. I will also, if you'll indulge me, just to take a second. I'm incredibly proud of our staff in children's services and across the council. And those that weren't tied up in those activities were doing and helping in terms of the food supply in the arena or making calls to vulnerable people. And finally, just to say, we've maintained our Child Friendly City work with numerous Zoom calls with lots of different groups of young people, importantly, asking them how this period has been for them, how things like returning to school has been. And that's all I'll say, Chair, if that's okay. Happy to take any questions.
We have a hand up from Barry Kushner. You're on mute, Barry.
Ashen Bay may not know, I've switched roles as of yesterday, today. So I've moved from Children's Services Cabinet Member to Housing and Regeneration. So I'm substituting for Lenny Hinigan, who will be brilliant as the Cabinet Lead for Children's Services and she'll attend these in the future. But just to, I mean, just to think, underline what Steve has said. I think what is critical and I think should be noted by the Health and Wellbeing Board is the significant role that the children's centres have played and continue to play around the public health and support for the communities where they're located. And I think if we didn't have the children's centres, I think life would have been an awful lot more difficult, certainly in getting out free school meal vouchers and maintaining contact with some most vulnerable families and other support that we provided. So I hope, I think, and I think it shows that this is something that the city needs to put its arms around the children's centres. I've mentioned this so many times. But we're shouldering that at the moment. But I think it's the children's centres should be something that belongs to the city and supported by the city. The only other thing I was going to say was that we, in reference to the Child Friendly City initiative, and obviously Lenny will pick this up. The Child Friendly City Governance Board the other day raised the question about where the governance will lie for the Child Friendly City. And one of the suggestions was for it to be incorporated into the work of the Health and Wellbeing Board. So I'm just putting that on the table really, just to consider. So obviously, the cabinet member will still have responsibility. But just in terms of it keeping that profile and that citywide importance of it, just what your thoughts to the Health and Wellbeing Board? Thank you.
Thank you for that. Were you looking to respond to that? Just moving on to your next question. Okay.
Yes, could I just ask some questions to Steve, which partly impinge on Martin's area as well as the Director for Adult Social Care. There have been a series of national reports, which I haven't seen quantified, which suggest that during the lockdown, there have been more cases of child abuse, often associated with more cases of domestic violence because, as we know, the two often go together. But there's been an under-reporting of them for a whole variety of reasons, which I don't understand, but which seem to be relating to the lockdown. So this report indicates what you've been doing. I don't want to denigrate anything you've been doing. But can either of you give some information about the practical effects of the lockdown in our community to vulnerable children and for that matter, their vulnerable mothers?
Chair, I could start that, if that's okay. And so, yeah, I think what's clear from the data we've seen is that there has been a reduction in terms of referrals to children's social care. And that is linked to the conditions of the lockdown. And we are now starting to see, particularly as schools, a lot more schools, we're back, we are starting to see a rise in activity. One of the issues, and I mentioned the courts process. What we've seen is a rise in the numbers of looked after children in Liverpool. And it's now just over round about 1,500. But that isn't because we've had a large rise in additional children becoming looked after. It's more about the fact that in terms of exiting from care, that the procedures and the support, court time and decision-making has been delayed really. In terms of domestic abuse, though, we have seen and been talking to our colleagues in the police and the Domestic Abuse Strategy Group about this in terms of proportion of the referrals that have come in to children's social care, an increasing proportion of those were linked to domestic abuse. The agencies who support victims of domestic violence I was speaking to yesterday, were talking about a large rise in demand really. I think there has been some specific activity around things like county lines and criminal exploitation. And we've seen some rise in that. But also our police colleagues have said the lockdown has created conditions where they're easier to tackle some of that as well. But I think universally, we are now concerned that the economic impacts of will put real pressure on families and really impact on their resilience. And unfortunately, we do forecast additional referrals into children's social care. I don't know how you feel about that, Martin. Are you expecting more as well?
Yeah, I think that just to add into what Steve's highlighted, and I think in terms of the numbers, we did see initially that the numbers, particularly in domestic abuse, weren't going up. But then we have seen a significant rise. And I think that what we can convey for the Health and Wellbeing Board is that the council with its partners has been able to maintain a priority around services, particularly in respect of rehousing people. So as you know, we have prioritised particularly around homelessness. But we've also included other key groups. And domestic violence and abuse has been one of those groups. So we have been able to rehouse people. I think, as Steve has said, in some ways, it's helped us to be able to identify some of the issues that are ongoing. There is also just a general view around, certainly in adult social care, that maybe some of the referrals that we would normally have seen haven't come through the system. But we have seen growths in other areas, particularly around mental wellbeing. There's significant pressures in mental health services as a consequence. I think on this particular, I think, support services that we provide have been maintained. And that also includes no recourse to public funds.
Thank you. I'll bring Barry. I presume that you're responding to this item as well. And then I'll bring you in, councillor Corbett.
Thanks. Yeah, thanks very much. Yeah, I mean, I think overall Steve's right. I think what we're expecting is an increase in cases because of the job off and referrals over the, particularly over the lockdown period. But our, our team managed, still maintained frontline, home visits to all our vulnerable children, families which are over 500, and also may continue to make thousands of assessments. I think we made assessments last time I saw of over 95% of the cases that were needed updating. We maintained our statutory visits that we needed to do. So I think in terms of, we maintained a staffing ratio of around just over 90%, including if you combine those who are in work and those who are working from home. And that balance shifted considerably over that lockdown period. So I think all credit to the staff for doing that. The worry is obviously the increase in mental health for young people, increasing mental ill health for young people. And we're really conscious of that. And there've been some, you're working with Wide Pass plus with some of the other support and the trailblazer teams that were attached to schools but community located around mental health. And they've been working remotely as well. So I think we tried to keep on top of it, but obviously, you know, we don't, we don't know what that situation is. And speaking to colleagues in the North West, they're in exactly the same situation. You know, we've got a huge overspend in children's services because of the lockdown, because we can't discharge children from care mainly. But and that is something that, you know, we need to see the government responding to appropriately and fairly. But the demands we expect for children's services will only increase.
Thank you. Councillor Corbett?
Yeah, welcome. Steve's report is really helpful. In terms of just looking quickly at free school. A big, all of those people that have been supporting through that route. And as Steve said before, the children's centres, Debbie McCandrew, Suzanne, a whole load of people. I think it would be worth us noting that we might need to contact the government and actually say the difference that having free school meals through the summer has made on families in Liverpool and get him in writing or somebody, perhaps Boris, to commit to that in future has made a difference. We did, of course, spend it over, I think it's just under a million pounds of our own money, actually buying in free school meal vouchers to get out to people. On Steve's comment about county lines, I think that is so important. Because where there's real deep chronic poverty and real pressure on families, the main big drug dealers know that and they will target the children. And in my own ward, I can see that happening physically with the movement of drugs across, across the ward. The other issue that Barry raised about child friendly city, I think that would be really helpful to have a regular update on the child friendly city, because that then also links up with social determinism of health. It links up with Children's Voice. So however that works in, I think that would be, that would be really good. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Yes, I agree. And I think we can have a conversation about how we make sure that that's worked. And I would like to think that it would naturally come in to all of the conversations that we've had, but we should make a point of making sure that it does. Yeah. Okay, thank you. Right, I think we're done there. So moving on then, thank you to item number seven, the epidemiology report, which is on pages 28 to 37, giving us an overview of the current epidemiology picture for COVID. Can I invite Matt Ashton to speak to this, please?
Thank you, Chair. So tabled the current report. I do have some slightly more updated information, which I'll give as I go through the report briefly, if that's okay, but asking the board to note the information. And we will continue to obviously monitor the data quickly and respond appropriately. So the first thing to say, I think, is around the level of infections. So the epidemic curve is on page two of the report, page 34 of the pack. And we can see that we've had a rapid increase in the number of positive cases since the start of September, really, but which has been very worrying. And obviously, Chair, as you made reference to at the start of the meeting, has resulted in a government intervention earlier on today. So just trying to find the right page here. So on page two of the report, we state the current rate being around 163 per 100,000. In fact, the rate we have today is 278 per 100,000 as a weekly rate. That's the most recent data we have. So just showing that the number of cases have continued to increase relatively quickly over a short period of time. Over the last couple of days, there's been a slight levelling off of the number of cases. But we are also aware that we do get data lagging in the reporting of the data. So obviously, we just keep a close eye on the data to understand exactly what that means. What I would say as well, Chair, is that the positivity rate is now around 16%. So that means that 16% of everybody who has tested results in a positive case. So the increase in number of cases is not as a result of more people being tested. It's as a result of more people being positive in the community. And that is absolutely what the report shows, that we now have widespread committee transmission of COVID in our community. There is a map on page three that shows the geographical distribution of the cases. But obviously, it's widespread, as I've just said. The demographic profile on page four indicates the spread across different age groups. Roughly, we now have around 55% of cases aged, in people aged under 40, but an increasing number of cases across all age groups. And there is a heat map on page five of the report. And as you can see from the far right hand side of that heat map, once you get to week 38, we're starting to see quite a large block of red, including into the six, sorry, 60 to 69, 70 to 79 and 80 plus age groups. And because of the nature of the disease, we know that then translates into hospital admissions and potentially into really severe outcomes at the end of that as well. There is some hospital admissions data that I have got that I'd like to share with the board, which says that since 11 COVID positive beds in hospital at the start of the month. And we're now at around 100. And again, just demonstrating the seriousness of the infection, how it can spread very quickly. And then there is ethnicity and mortality information in there. A note around mortality information, of course, it is lagged. And this is one of the things we've always had. So there is a lag in the reporting of mortality information. So we have seen a number of deaths now in the community as a result of this second uptick in the number of cases, but it won't flow through on the data, on the official data quite yet. Chair, I will pause there, but I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Matt. Any questions?
Either must or you might be able to answer this. There are two curves. There's the infection curve and then there's the mortality curve. What's the average time that we would expect the mortality curve to be on the same sort of trend as the infection?
Chair, I'm happy to pick that up if you wish.
Thank you. Let's see whether our answers are the same.
So in general, Richard, you would have a two week lag from positive cases into hospital admissions for the people who are going to end up in hospital and around a two week lag from hospital admissions into mortality for people who are in the most severe situation in hospitals. So a total of four weeks. What I would say as well, though, is it is probably a slightly different scenario than from what we've seen in the first wave, because if you like, everybody in the community was out at the same time, mixing. So our vulnerable population were out just as much as everybody else was. And so they took the impact at an earlier stage, whereas probably where we are right now is our more vulnerable groups are more aware of COVID and aware of the vulnerabilities that exist and therefore are perhaps more cautious about being out and about. So whilst we have seen a big increase in positive cases in our community, initially, it was in the younger age groups, which by definition are less vulnerable. But over time, it has started to increase across all age groups, which is the heat map. So what I think we will see in the next couple of weeks is a larger increase in the levels of those hospital admissions.
Thank you, Matt. I have a question for you as well, actually. I mean, we obviously focus on mortality rates, which is a very easy thing to measure. But there are increasing reports of patients with long COVID or long term morbidity as a result of infections. Are we anywhere close to collecting any information or data on that?
At a local level, we do not currently have that information. What I can tell you is that at a national level, there is estimated to be 300,000 people who are still suffering with the after effects of COVID infection one month after the infection and around 60,000 people who are still suffering with the after effects after three, three months after the initial infection. So there is lots of research going into long COVID right now. What I think what we have to remember is this is, we are at a really early stage in our understanding of the virus and understanding the impact of the virus. This is a new virus in 2020. So that learning will continue to emerge. But you're absolutely right, Chair. Where we are right now is increasing awareness of the longer term impacts of COVID, not just the, if you like, easier to measure death as a result of COVID infection.
And I think there's something we should be doing in our messaging. And because young people seem to think that they've been given a message, their illness will be mild. But from my own clinical practice, some of the people who are presenting with longer term symptoms are actually quite young and were previously fit and healthy. So I think we can, there's something we can do about our messaging there.
Thank you, Chair. I agree. And there is also, I guess, something I should have said, which is there is also emerging evidence around longer term organ development impact, particularly around young people, around brain, lung, kidney functions. And clearly, by the nature of those things, that is going to be a much longer period of time before we fully understand the impact of that on younger people's health. But you're absolutely right. We need to be clear around the fact that those risks exist.
Thank you. Councillor Corbett?
Just in terms of picking that up, in terms of the long tail of COVID and over the net, it would be useful to be able to see what we're able to do in terms of bringing that back to the Health and Wellbeing Board, so we can track that, particularly from children's development coming through. And can I just give a bit of a shout out on page seven to our care homes? Because it's very clear there that our, the deaths in care homes, although they're incredibly high in comparison to the national figure, were significantly lower. And just a massive thank you to all the workers in the care homes and also the families who have held to the rules, which has been incredibly difficult for them. And a shout out to our Everton one Milvina, who, when I talked to them last time, they said they'd had no positive. Much of that is down to the staff and the families working incredibly hard together. So good on them. For very low pay, I mean, as Martin Farron's been battling away for, for a long time, very, very low pay, which, you know, we've got to turn that around somehow.
I agree and appreciate you raising that, because it's not just low pay, but it's low esteem sometimes, which is completely wrong. Yeah. Councillor Kemp?
Yes, just to follow up on that point, because I was also going to say, this is, must be a very important part of our messaging, that you might feel you've only got a bit of flu now. But in 10 years' time, and we don't know, obviously, that your lungs might have been affected. So you're more likely to get a whole series of pulmonary or other illnesses. And this is a real message that the council, and regrettably, the government isn't doing so, we have to, to get home to our young people, that what seems like flu today might be a killer in 10 years' time. So for goodness sake, do not take this lightly.
Any other questions on the epidemiology report? Well, thank you, Matt. So we move then to number eight, which I think is the supplementary part of the agenda. The report came separately, which is the NHS response and planning. So the NHS response to COVID, including a discussion of our recovery plans and the challenges of maintaining regular services alongside COVID services and in particular, mental health services. Can I invite Jan Ledward to speak to this?
Thank you. Thanks, Fiona. I will assume that members have had a chance to read the report. And to be honest, I think we have been through quite a lot of the information in Matt's report previously in terms of the history and where we've been in Liverpool with COVID. I'd really focus on the opportunities the NHS were taking to try and generate some recovery of COVID. And it wasn't as easy as we'd all anticipated in terms of switching services off. And then quickly, we were turning them back to the same levels that they were at before. And that's partly because of the levels of infection control that are necessary now in hospitals. So a significant amount of our capacity has been hampered by the fact that it takes longer to clean some of the equipment. We have to have distancing between our patients coming in. And there's very other, many other infection control measures that have hampered us to be able to return to a level of normal that we would have had this time last year. So I think it was a request, really, and I know we've had questions at our governing body meeting about the length of time that some people are now having to wait. And we have asked for people's indulgence and patience in us actually returning to the levels of activity that we would have seen previously. We've included a diagram in, a chart in the, in the document itself to show what our plans were. Unfortunately, when you write reports, time catches up with you. And this was published before we started to see the impact of the second wave of COVID now on our hospital services. So this was the original plan. And I know Claire is on the call today for Steve and she can, she can support some of this. But our capacity is going to be hampered yet again because of the increase in the numbers of COVID patients now being admitted to hospital and the impact it has on critical. So if you are experiencing further delays, again, we apologize for that. Obviously, we will try and maintain as many services across our system as we possibly can, despite COVID being at levels of increase currently. But it will be a case that we will have to take this week by week to decide which services we can continue to maintain in the local system. What I would, it's not just on our acute hospitals that this impact is having. It's also having an impact on our primary care colleagues and particularly our mental health colleagues. The incidence of mental health and the capacity in our mental health hospitals has been severely constrained. And that's not just because of infection control measures. It's because of demand on the services. So I must thank all our staff in all our hospital sector, primary care sector and community for the excellent work that they've been doing and the support they've offered each other across the system to manage services appropriately for our population. We will continue to monitor this very closely and we'll keep Health and Wellbeing Board updated on our activity levels and the services that we are having to either restrict or close as a result of increased demand on services. And we'll keep the public updated as well, as far as we can. We're happy to take any questions. And I'm sure Joe's on the call today, as is Claire. And I'm sure that they're happy to support with any questions.
Thank you, Jan. Can I invite questions?
I've got a couple, Chair. The first, I want to confess to having been wrong, but have now on the right path. It's about telehealth development. That last comment is not to be reported to the mayor of Liverpool, by the way. I just had an automatic feeling that telehealth was just remote and would destroy contact. And there must be an element in which it does. However, it does enable people like GPs to see a lot more people. So I'd like to know how the CCG is looking at telehealth as a pure health item. But that links to the comments that Jan was making about mental health. One of the projects we ran during the acute lockdown in my ward was paying the reader organisations volunteers just their expenses to talk to 10 lonely people regularly in the community. And I'm wondering whether or not we need to review together this question of mental health and loneliness. Being better people in the things together. Because I believe if we have a community approach and a telehealth approach to mental health issues, we can actually stop lots of problems becoming acute. And I, for example, am talking to some musicians now about how they might deal with that. So that's my first there. And can I come back later on care homes?
Okay. On telehealth, we have got an item Dave Horstfield from the CCG is here to talk to the telehealth specifically. But telehealth is a monitoring service, not to replace contact with GPs. It's GPs have been doing a lot of telephone and video consulting, but that's slightly different. So we'll come back to that. And Jan, do you want to respond? And then I've got Martin.
Yeah, and I recognize that. And I think I'm sure Jo will want to come in in terms of the service offer to people that have been experiencing really challenging mental health issues during COVID, but also as a consequence of COVID and isolation and lockdown. And many services, we've had to think very differently about in terms of being face to face. And I know the life rooms in Walton, as an example, have put most of their services now online and continue to make an offer to support that local community with their ongoing mental health issues, but also to treat those patients who are new to the service. But I agree, you know, this is about community. And I think One Liverpool and the city plan is about how we work more effectively to build our community resilience and use it as an asset to help our communities develop appropriately. But I know Jo's got his hand up and Claire's got her hand up. So I'll shut up and let them answer.
Thank you. And I'm not quite sure of the order. Martin's got his hand up as well. But I think if we're following on the train of conversation there, I'll bring Jo in and then Claire. And then we'll come back to you, Martin. Is that okay?
Okay, thank you, Chair. It's probably just worth saying, certainly during the first phase of COVID, we managed to keep adult mental health services pretty much open. That doesn't mean to say we didn't change the route by which people could contact services. So we did see a significant telephone and digital shift rather than face to face. But actually, all of the work we've done on engaging patients on satisfaction around digital access has shown that about 78% thought it was as good or better than a face to face consultation. And 87% of patients said they would, they'd like to see further development of digital opportunities. You know, we're very clear that that presents a big opportunity, but it presents an opportunity to add additional of them totally replace face to face opportunities. So that's how we're positioning that. More broadly speaking, we have seen almost a full pre-COVID restoration of activity. Actually, we probably were in that point by late May, early June. But what we were also seeing was a very significant rise in acuity of patients. So people were much, much iller by them and very significantly. And this was both evidenced in our crisis services, but also the work we do with Merseyside Police, North West Ambulance, British Transport Police, where we have our nurses in emergency response vehicles. We were seeing people with COVID related psychosis, really very ill, suicidal. And these were about, probably 80% of those patients were individuals not previously known to Merseyside. So some really fundamental shifts in presentation across mental health services during Wave One COVID. We've also done a very significant piece of work based on the Liverpool population, looking at population health and doing some new research against the evidence to look at how and when a mental health surge is likely to take place as a response to the first phase of COVID. And probably rather than go into the detail of that now, I mean, the headline is we anticipate over the next couple of years, up to a 30% rise in requests for mental health input. That's everything from talking therapies upwards. And a very significant impact on those people who have an existing long term condition. So lots of clues as to what we might do, segueing, of course, into what we might be able to do there with telemonitoring the existing long term conditions modules we have. But it might be if the board was interested that we could bring that as a fuller presentation and share the documentation perhaps at a future meeting. It's a sophisticated and complicated piece of work, but in the end, the messages are the messages that we anticipate a very significant rise in demand for services.
Thank you, Jo. Can I bring in Claire?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Just to add to all of that, really, I mean, we were progressing really well in terms of kind of building up to pre-COVID state in terms of activity. Our A and E was pretty much back up to normal over the last few weeks. And obviously, we're now in a very different position to where we were in March, where we we're still now, you know, so it's a very nuanced, balanced approach that we're taking. But the numbers are starting to rise. And I think what we know now in terms of the profile and how we manage the disease within an acute setting is different and how they kind of progress through the system. So it feels quite different in this period. I think coming back to councillor's point about the innovation that we've adopted during and some of the learnings that we took from response. So we have really embraced virtual consultation. And this period of recovery has allowed us to really evaluate with patients what's worked and what hasn't and how we improve. And certainly, our outpatient transformation programme will continue, will start and continue absolutely based on some of the virtual consultations, some of the innovation that was forced upon us essentially through our initial COVID response. But I think having the patient at the heart of our evaluation and is it working is absolutely right. It's not the only approach, but it was a brilliant stopgap and we need to kind of work on that and work out best practice as we go through the pathways. So yeah, I think we are starting to see increased numbers within the trust and increasingly into critical care. And it's just that balance that we're having to play at the moment.
I bring you in now, Martin?
Yeah, sure. It was just really adding in a little bit about what colleagues have already said. Certainly in my experience elsewhere, and I think it's the same here. I think both the wider assistive technology and digital agenda, but also telehealth in particular has actually for many people given them reassurance because they can use it more flexibly and it can be designed around those particular health issues that they've got. So people have found it something very beneficial. It isn't, as has already been said, necessarily just a replacement, but in certain cases, it can be better than waiting for an appointment because it allows people to do things quickly. And as a slight aside, if Dave Horstfield's going to talk about the technical agenda and digital options, just to flag that, for instance, one of the feedbacks that we've had through COVID has been the shift particularly around carers services, doing a lot of things online. You're seeing carers allow them to access stuff that they couldn't access before. So they've found it a lot better and they don't necessarily want that to be taken away. It adds another option for people. It's not instead of.
Thank you. Richard, you wanted to come in on care homes and then I'll come to councillor Corbyn?
Yeah, so looking at the figures that Matt presented before about the fact that the infection rates are going back from young people back up through to the older and therefore more vulnerable, we could have political disagreements about this, but probably not the two of us in the council chamber at the moment about the way that our care homes were or were not protected in the first wave. But we do know that although there were such arms had been put around the care service, that wasn't true. That people were returned from hospitals who should not have been in ideal circumstances and weren't allowed to go to hospitals. Are we confident that there is enough liaison now between the health service and the care service and that there's the capacity in both to make sure that we really are putting our arms, or whatever phrase you want to use, around the care service?
Jan, do you want to respond to that?
Yeah, thanks for that. And yes, I can provide some assurance that the relationships between ourselves and social care to support the care sector have improved drastically and lessons have been learned. So we do work more closely and some of our staff have been redeployed into supporting social care and the discharge process generally from hospitals into care, even if that is going home with support. So I think, as I said, we have learned lessons in this and it was it was poor that we didn't pick up on this earlier.
councillor Corbyn?
In terms of the NHS recovery plans, that section of the report on page two of the report, it says recover the maximum elective activity possible. I'm just concerned that there are, I know residents in Everton who've had four or five times cancellations on operations, particularly joints. And I think we need to keep an eye on that because pain and chronic stress and worry and immobility and all layers upon each other. I really welcome the, where it says expand and improve mental health services, especially for people with disability and or autism. I think the autism, we need to really push on money for autism. I noticed that it went to NHS England on the 21st of September. I don't know. Does it mean they say yes and they give us a whole wad of extra money, Chair, for this? I'm sure you can respond to that. On page seven of that report, the supplementary, where it talks about the flu vaccination, do we know if there is a link? What would happen if people get simultaneously flu and COVID? And is that possible? And also what the consideration from the government is around the national guidance re mass vaccination programme for 50 to 60 saying, get your vaccination next weekend. So I'm 63. So perhaps it's already gone through. I don't know. Plus, the last bit, bottom of that page, the One Liverpool Plan implementation, mental health. Yeah, we've got that done as a priority. It says, you know, targeted action in reducing inequalities. I think we've got to start actually saying what that means because it's being referred to a lot. But what does that mean in practice? Are we actually going down the route of proportionate universalism? In which case, what does that look like in reality? So we can see then what's happening in terms of, are we making any headway in terms of reducing inequalities? Or are we just stating it every so often?
Thanks very much. Good set of questions in there. I can confirm that the plans that are submitted do not automatically generate a big pot of money. That's correct, isn't it, Jan? Sadly. My understanding is that the plans are submitted and then rated for how assured the system, the NHS England are that our system is going to cope and be able to enact our plans, et cetera. Your question about what happens if somebody gets both flu and COVID, I suppose, yes, you could end up being unfortunate enough to develop both infections at the same time. I know that anyone who is admitted to hospital currently is tested for both automatically. Matt, did you have your hand up on that part of the question or some other part?
I'm really sorry, Chair, that I was juggling multi screens there. Yeah, it was confirmation that you can have flu and COVID at the same time. And obviously, that in itself presents a risk. And in fact, having one of them could increase the risk of you getting the other one because your defenses are lowered. So it works together in a complicated kind of way. I think the message therefore is clearly we need to push the flu vaccine as much as we possibly can do to protect people. And obviously, the other way around, we need to make sure people are following the guidance around social distancing, hand hygiene, face covering and so on. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I wasn't aware that the 50 to 64 cohort were being invited as yet. The instructions received by GP practices was November would be when that would start happening. We are currently working on our under 65s with other long term conditions and other risk factors. So I don't know. Let's not go into it here, whether you're on that list or not. Inequalities, I think so there's a very real example sprung to mind there when you asked that question. And Matt, on the screen in front of me, Matt and I are due to have a conversation about health checks. With NHS health checks of primary prevention, looking for people at higher risk of cardiovascular disease. And previously, that's been done equally across the whole city. But our conversation is about where do we target the money and encourage those health checks to be done in certain parts of the city. And so that's just one example, but I think what having it in our One Liverpool strategy has made it. It comes up in every conversation. So what will be the impact on inequalities here? Or have we forgotten about inequalities here? Jan, would you like to add anything to that?
No, I think it's reminding ourselves to ask that question every time we make a decision. And to really start to use data to identify those that are of great risk of being treated unequally across the city. And using the data to understand whether, you know, there is fair access to services and treatment for every, you know, resident in the population, or do we make it very difficult for some parts of the system to access the appropriate care? It is about asking those questions as we develop it going forward. But this isn't just with the CCG. Obviously, this is part of One Liverpool. It's a new way of working for the system, which I think is the important in this.
And how will that be recorded in terms of, Jan quite rightly mentions the importance of data. So I'm looking at some ways that unless I'm behind the curve with this, which I might be, the neighbourhood, the health neighbourhood plans together or the way that working actually tends to be around GP practices rather than more boundaries. So I can think of one particular GP practice which covers about three quarters of Everton, for example, but actually isn't in that neighbourhood practice when it comes to Anfield and Everton. And that may well happen in other parts of the city as well. Because if we can get really good, I know public health have got very, very good data sets. And if we can superimpose them together and see what the trends are and what the analysis is showing. And also going back to the way that communities have really good local information and local ways of doing things. If we did it together, we might be able to crack some of it.
Absolutely. And that's the whole intention behind One Liverpool. And yeah, I know there were boundary challenges around some of the artificial constructs in the way that we're required to work with some of our colleagues, Jane. But we do superimpose that data. So we do work with public health on that information. We use the information we've got at neighbourhood levels, the neighbourhood health packs to encourage plans to be based on what that data is telling our local system. So it should be about the local need, not about what people like to do. So but there are a set of measures and indicators that we're starting to use to assess this. And I think in the report that we've got later, we've also described the evaluation of patients' experience of COVID over the last period of time. But communities, then we will develop more rich information about the impact that we're having in our
Did you catch that? You broke up a little bit, Jan, but Jan was referring to the public engagement activity that the CCG Did you catch that? You broke up a little bit, Jan, but Jan was referring to the public engagement activity that the CCG are undertaking currently to understand people's experience in Covid, both good and bad. And information about that is on the CCG website. There's a survey that we're asking people to complete to help inform our planning going forward. I just wanted to take just a very brief word on primary care as well, because we've talked about hospitals and care homes. And primary care activity is back up to full levels of activity, although most of it is still remote. But about thirty percent of it now is face to face, but that's still done telephone first. And then my for primary care is resilience. We've had three practices in the last couple of weeks that have had to scale back services because they've had positive members of staff or staff off isolating. But all practices are working in a buddy system. They're working in the network systems to support each other. And then the other final thing that I just wanted to, for any of the public that are listening, you might look at this report and be quite worried. And it is very, very concerning. Message would be that the NHS is still there. And we have set up everything. So from primary care, where practices have Covid areas and non-Covid areas to the hospital, which is split into Covid wards and non-Covid wards. And the escalated levels of infection control that we've put in place means that it is safe for you to access services. And if you have a worrying symptom and you are worried about your health, then you should be seeking medical attention. So please don't be frightened to come forward with a serious complaint. Matt, do you want to add to that?
I just wanted to reinforce that message. Actually, thank you, Chair. The importance of people seeking out medical treatment if they needed is absolutely essential. And although this is clearly a very challenging time for all of us right now, we definitely do not want people to be put off from seeking out help where they need it. I think the other point is, Chair, and I'm sorry to bang on about it, this shows the importance of us all acting together in order to deal with Covid, in order that we can allow frontline health and care services to still operate to the best of their ability. And that's why we all need to be playing in our part in pushing on levels of Covid transmission. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Okay. And so can we note and agree that report? Thank you. So moving into our section on governance, we have three reports under governance today. The first, item nine, the Health Protection Board. Members will recall at the last meeting, the board agreed the establishment of this subgroup to implement and update the outbreak control plan, which responds to community outbreaks of Covid nineteen. And the reports on pages thirty eight, I'll invite Matt to talk to this, please.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, absolutely. This is the details around the Health Protection Board that is currently meeting weekly. The terms of reference and the membership of the board are attached into that. The board meets weekly to look at the data, to look at the testing in the system and where it best needs to be deployed to look at our outbreaks. And one of the appendices is around the locations of outbreaks. And you'll be able to see from that that they are, it is a widespread number of outbreaks, not all in one particular place. And to respond with our action plan and how we are responding to Covid in the city. And obviously, our action plan is based around our outbreak control plan, which has previously Health and Wellbeing Board for approval. Chair, I might just very briefly say, so we met yesterday and items covered yesterday included testing priorities. So the order of priority for testing. We looked at the flu plan, which we talked about. We looked at the impact of Covid on education. And we talked about communications, what some of our key communications messages are. One of the things the board discussed was currently only forty eight percent of people nationally are able to identify what the key symptoms of Covid nineteen are. And I know that sounds kind of quite incredible that despite us living with Covid for, you know, six plus months, only forty eight percent of the population can still accurately define what the symptoms are. But also in addition to that, Chair, only eighteen percent of people who were advised to self-isolate as a result of a positive test actually reported that they were doing so. So we clearly have, still have some work to do around helping our communities understand the symptoms of coronavirus and understanding what actions they need to take if they are themselves positive. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Those are very worrying percentages. I'm sure you and I can have a conversation about what we can do to support that. I would acknowledge though, Matt, your tireless work at trying to share that messaging. You seem to be constantly popping up on my Twitter feed.
Apologies, Chair. I should say, actually, just a clarification on self-isolation, of course, it isn't just about people not self-isolating. It's about us enabling people to self-isolate it. So I don't want this to think about kind of I am blaming people for not self-isolating. Sometimes people have difficulty doing that because of the conditions they're in. So it's around how we as a city support everybody to enable them to self-isolate if they need to. Sorry, Chair.
No, that very important distinction. Thank you, Matt. Any questions for Matt on the Health Protection Board?
A question on something that isn't in the outbreak details. We were told that the four horsemen of the apocalypse would storm across Liverpool after three big uproarious celebrations of the glorious Reds football prowess. I've seen no uptick in cases flowing from that anywhere in the system. Now, these statistics will probably be too late for that. But what were the infection problems caused by something we were told was going to be quite serious?
Matt?
I think that's a, I think that's a difficult question to answer definitively, Chair. I think certainly we know that obviously outdoor events are less risky than indoor events. And I think the events councillor Kemp is talking about were largely outdoor celebrations. I think also at the point that those events occurred, the overall level of virus circulating in the community was much less. And therefore, we have not seen a specific increase directly attributable to those events. Nonetheless, I would say that does not mean that crowds gathering is a good idea. And I think the latest data published today suggests that one in two hundred people in the country. If I've got my data wrong, I apologize, but I think it was something like one in two hundred may have had So the point being is you ever actually know who you are coming in contact with and whether they have an active Covid infection? Especially when you think about the kind of the lag at the start of the infection. So regardless of whether the specific events that councillor Kemp is referencing to led to an increase in number of cases in the city, I would suggest it is not a wise thing for people to be doing at this time, gathering in crowds, either in an indoor or outdoor.
I just raise that, Chair, if I might say, because again, I think it's an important part of our messaging. Because a lot of people in Liverpool are saying nothing happened as a result of that. And perhaps we could be nuancing our messaging to say that there are things you could be doing very safely outside. The difficulty, of course, for things like football matches is not just in the terraces where you could probably do it safely. It's the buses and the coaches to get there and the pubs around it. So I think we need to be more nuanced and encouraging more people to do more things outside, providing we can ensure they get there safely and do it in a safe way.
And Chair, on that, I think there is a message there about, and perhaps the clarity around the new regulations will address some of these as well. But there is absolutely an essential element about social distancing at all times with, from people who are not in your household or social bubble. So especially indoors, but in all settings. So if you're outdoors, you must be socially distanced from people who are not in your household or social bubble. If you are not in contact with somebody who has the virus, you cannot catch the virus from them.
Thank you. Are we ready to move on? Can we note and agree that update? Thank you, Matt. Item ten is the Joint Commissioning Group. On pages forty eight, forty nine, there is a summary of the work undertaken by the Joint Commissioning Group, which is a subgroup of this board. Martin Farron, are you there to talk to this, please?
Yeah, a number of us on the call, and at least given that Jan chaired the last meeting, or we're involved, are involved in this. I think the main thing to highlight is we did have to pause things, given the response issues that we were dealing with, but we have reinstated this work. The thing that I would point out really is the bullet points at the top of the second page of the report, so on page forty nine, highlights the key areas that we're looking at. In particular, around that sort of wider population health. And I think councillor Corbett already mentioned it, that we're looking at, how do we do this across a range of neighbourhoods? Which is really looking at a sort of geographic spread and the differences that are there. But particularly looking at complex lives, those with long term conditions, including mental health, frailty, and then around disability. There is substantial work going on in all of these areas. What we're looking to do is how do we actually look at this as a system? I think this also links into then around an integrated approach and how do we develop a neighbourhood model? Including earlier intervention and prevention and building on the assets and strengths that we've got there. So it connects across a range of things. I think it's fair to say that also we've reinstated some of the work within the council to look at how do we connect some of these things within the council itself? To be able to connect that up with NHS colleagues. It's not just how do we connect up with the NHS. We haven't necessarily got all of these things sorted within our own internal organisations. So I think it's one of those areas that we obviously will bring back further reports to.
Thank you, Martin. Do we have any questions for Martin or Matt? No, ongoing work. Thank you. Brings us to item eleven, which is the Liverpool Integrated Care Partnership Group. I was to invite Tony Reeves to provide an update. We met as a partnership group this week. Now, I think Tony has left the meeting. So Jan, do you want to, as co-chair, update us, please?
Yeah, thank you. And sorry that Tony unfortunately has had to leave. So the work of the Integrated Care Partnership Group is bringing together the work that the Provider Alliance is doing in Liverpool and the Integrated Care Partnership Group to ensure that we're aligned on delivering on One Liverpool. The work that we're doing has been supported by a piece of work analysing some of the work we've been doing in our neighbourhoods to hold a mirror up to ourselves a little bit as a system as to how we are working closely. So that was received at the last meeting, which was really positive. And there are lessons to be learned on how we do engage effectively with communities. Much of the work we're doing has been facilitated to deliver that. And the other piece of work that I think has been highlighted, and I know Dave's here today, was the work that we've done around telehealth. So it, I know it referred very much to the last item, but it's certainly something that the Integrated Care Partnership Group using digital technology is looking at to enable us to think quite creatively about how we support people with long term conditions across the system. And I don't know whether there's any questions on that that we can cover.
Does anybody have any questions for Jan on that? No. Certainly, as a member of that group, it seems like it is developing into a very, very positive meeting. And the group's working really well together. The enthusiasm is excellent and contagious. Martin?
Yeah, it's not a question. It was just to add into it because I think Jan's set out and in the paper, sort of wider areas around sort of use of digital and so on. One of the things that we've been involved in through a group, Joe leads around the out of hospital work. And it sort of links back to a question that was raised before by councillor Kemp, which is around the support to care homes. And I think that what we've used is around some of the digital technology particularly to do that. But I've got to say, I congratulate my health colleagues because it was they that really pushed it. And the lead is the chief officer at Warrington, Andrew Davies, that we've seen a significant investment that is due to come to Cheshire and Merseyside around providing technology into care homes so that they can actually participate. Because what we've got is a real mixture in care homes, abilities to participate, both in terms of them having the technology, but also therefore them having the skill sets to do it. And a large part of that will also support something which is really close to many people's hearts, which is about how do we use that technology also to help families to stay in contact so that they can So the thing in question is eleven thousand iPads to be provided to care homes, which I'm sure we'd all say is phenomenal, which will allow that digital contact, but more importantly, particularly for people, well, all of us, because we all do it. But I think people with dementia to be able to see their loved ones and have a conversation, share pictures, all sorts of things. So, you know, I just wanted to highlight that because I think a little bit earlier, and if you'd just give me a little bit of latitude. I think that when it was raised that we hadn't supported or wrapped around care homes. I think I would want to say that I think there are always things that we can do. And I think Jan said that, you know, we've learnt some lessons, but equally, some of the practice generally across agencies was extremely good. And I think it reflects the local good working relationships. I think that some of the issues that councillor Kemp was referring to were largely because of some of the national direction that was being given to the system around things. And, you know, if we think back about it, it's almost unbelievable at the time, but we had care homes that didn't have access to PPE. We had care homes that couldn't access testing. And we weren't being given the resources or guidance to support them in a way which we would now take as absolute. Hence the comment that we wouldn't have gone down the same route. So I think the learning is massive. But just going back to this, I just want to flag that there's a lot going on on the technology side, which we can, we join some of that up. But it's in particular linked into care homes as well.
Thank you. Any final comments? No. So can we note that update? Thank you, Jan, and agree. And then we move on to our forward planning section. So item twelve today is remote monitoring and support in Liverpool. So that's on pages fifty to fifty three, which is going to provide us with information on the digital services that have been developed for remote monitoring and how these can be used to address support for people in the pandemic and for winter and forever, really. Because I think you're going to hear how positive it is. Dave, are you there?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Chair.
Patiently. Thank you.
Thank you. It's been a hot topic today, clearly. So if I can just start by addressing a couple of items on there that we did before, I think perhaps solutions are concerned is perhaps digital. And that's a key item. And what I would say, it's not specifically addressed in the paper itself, but what I would say upfront is that some of the items that are in here, if you look at things like telehealth and telecare, we've been very, very careful to ensure that those services are actually provided for patients, including training. And they are services are delivered to the patient regardless of what equipment they have themselves is provided for them. Other services that do require people to have equipment, what we've been very careful to do is to make sure that digital channels are in addition to the existing channels that are there for those individuals. So therefore, we're not creating a divide, but actually adding an additionality to what we're already providing to add capacity and actually free up some of the services for those who are not comfortable with those digital channels in terms of the response from those services that they achieve. So we're very, very mindful of digital inequalities and not widening that divide when we introduce digital technology into services. And perhaps the other side of that is also that digital equality, inequality works both ways. And actually, there are perhaps more predominantly in our younger generations, an expectation of digital channels being available to them for health and care services that they expect to be able to have because they experience them in all other walks of life. So again, there's an element of ensuring that we provide digital services for those who expect them. So moving on to the remote support element of it. I would just say that this does cover mainly around remote monitoring and some of those core services. But I would reiterate Joe's comment from before that there are an awful lot of digital activities going around the city at the moment. And perhaps if the board prefer a wider presentation, as Joe suggested, we'll cover some of those further activities that are not covered in this paper. So to start off, we do have and have been working on a joint strategy between the CCG and the local authority under the One Liverpool Plan to ensure that this kind of technology goes forward jointly and well planned in that way. So the first item on there, and I'll touch on each of them briefly. So the first item on there, and I'll touch on each of them briefly, is remote support, which is around telehealth. So just to be clear on the definitions, telehealth, when we refer to that, is the use of technology to monitor patients in their own home or setting that allows us to monitor vital signs and continually monitor those patients' vital signs. In some ways, not that dissimilar to what you would see at the side of a hospital bed, if that makes it easier to understand in terms of blood pressure, pulse oximetry and other such telemetry that we monitor. And that is then monitored by a clinician to ensure that that patient is well and improving as we would expect them to do with their current condition. As it stands today, we have COPD, heart failure and diabetes as the patients, and they can have any, and that can be, that does cover comorbidity. So essentially, you can have any one or all three of those particular conditions. And we are currently working on a COVID pathway, which, which also supports some of the COVID symptoms in terms of those patients. Now, specifically referring to COVID, you'll see as part of the paper that prior to the first wave, we had roughly around 2,000 patients being monitored at any one time on the service. At the time last year, we were aware that that was the largest deployment in Europe of this kind of technology. During the COVID period, working, and it was the Mercy Care team that delivered this clinical service for us, quite astonishingly managed to increase the number of patients on that service by 3,000 patients in a matter of four weeks. So essentially, that was quite an incredible move towards supporting patients. So we now have over 5,000 patients currently monitored on the telehealth service. In reference to councillor Kemp's comments earlier, accepting that mental health is very important around this, what I would say is this does monitor physical symptoms, but we do also as part of the system have a set of questions for patients to monitor their mental wellbeing as well, that allows the clinicians to take a view of how that patient is doing in terms of their mental health as well, to raise any concerns that we may need to address for them. So whilst it's not a solution to actually treating any mental health conditions, it is a useful dataset for us to understand how that patient is currently managed themselves. So moving on from that, we are looking to move that service across Cheshire and Merseyside. It was developed here in Liverpool, but we are looking to support other areas to adopt that across Cheshire and Merseyside as we move forward. Moving on to a slightly different type of technology where we talk about, and this is something that's been mentioned before, we talk about telecare, sorry, into telemedicine and teletriage. Again, I apologise for the different terminology and I'll try and explain these as we go through. So telemedicine and teletriage is actually more or less a remote consultation. So we've had that in our care homes and all of our care nursing homes have access to this service, which is essentially, we provide a laptop computer into each of those settings. And it allows on a 24/7 basis, the care home to access clinical support for any of their residents, if they have concerns about how their particular health condition. And they will go through to a separate service who will provide them with clinical advice and if necessary escalate that service on to either recommend either accessing a GP, a community matron, or perhaps even calling an ambulance if that is felt necessary. What I would say is from this service, we see very, very few requests for ambulances. And we've seen that that's actually saved a lot of ambulance calls over the last period of time, where actually that clinical support has negated the need, where otherwise that may have to have been the outcome. We are moving forward with this service. So at the moment, we have a service called eMedicare, which is basically this online consultation. We are moving forward with that and we are looking to blend that with our telehealth service going forward, which will allow more remote monitoring of vital signs in the care home sector so that we can be more proactive with those residents in those settings and support them even further. That is ongoing as we speak today. Moving on to support in remaining at home, this is very much driven by colleagues in the local authority. It is a joint initiative between the CCG and the city council. It is, it is run by the city council. And essentially, at this point in time, we're supporting around 8,000 individuals via a whole range of technology, whether that's detecting falls, remotely monitoring smoke alarms and a whole raft of technologies that can be placed into the home to support individuals to live independently. I won't go into any of the details of that, but what I would say is, and it's quite rare, we've still not come across it anywhere else in the country to date, is that certainly in Liverpool, working together with the local authority and the NHS, that this technology is actually available on prescription by GPs. And we've not seen that anywhere else, but that allows immediate access where, where health colleagues feel that there is a need for our residents in Liverpool to access this technology, that that can be done very quickly and on prescription. Then finally, it's just to cover some of the activity that we've been going on through primary care. And as you can see, there's, from the paper, there's quite a lot of activity that we've moved forward in recent times to support people accessing services specifically throughout the COVID period, but not just limited to that. That includes items such as eConsult, which allows people to access web-based services at any time and actually submit information for the practice to review at a later date and then get back in contact, where there's a lesser, less urgency around what, what the consultation needs to be around. That has been very successful and deployed well in Liverpool by our practices. We do have video consultations and we've more recently, in the last year or so, introduced a system called iPlato, which allows not only for GP practices to send messages, and we have sent over a million text messages in recent times to support shielded patients, et cetera, and get messages out, but also it allows a centralised messaging service as well, so it doesn't rely on practices in of themselves to try and coordinate a single message. We can actually do that from one central place that allows us to act much more quickly to get messages out to the public. So there are a number of things. I won't cover all the things in the paper, but essentially, going back to other services and covering the wider elements of it, what I would say is Liverpool is most definitely at the forefront of this, not only in terms of the technology that we have out there. As Joe mentioned before, there are things that are moving forward quite rapidly in attacking to support that activity out there. Both Mercy Care and Liverpool University Hospital Trust are one of the very few set of trusts who are designated as global digital exemplars. Them taking this forward certainly puts us on the front foot to use this technology and develop it in a suitable way for our population. If I can pause there, Chair, for any questions?
Thank you, Dave. Clearly something that lately very proud of our digital services in this city. Any questions? Councillor Corbett?
Dave, thanks for that. Sounds like mountains have been moved over the last few years incredibly. And Liverpool at the forefront of moving mountains is great, as usual. I'm just thinking about, and forgive my ignorance on this, the link up with the provision of broadband in people's homes, how dependent is some of this or all of this on that? I'm expecting the answer to be some of it. And if some of it is, is there then a tie-up between that and the rolling out of broadband across the city, particularly targeting the most disadvantaged wards? So that we can, we can make sure that that is, is in place? And also, given the pushback, which normally doesn't work, but sometimes does, in terms of the big mobile masks that go up, of which there are a lot in the city, whereas actually if it's done by fibre, it's much stronger, it's not so, it's less easy to damage. And although it's, although the cost of it, initial outlay is a lot more expensive, but longer term, it can, it can be done better. So I'm not very well put, but you know what I'm talking about.
Chair, if I can respond?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. So, okay, in answer to the question, so there's kind of two parts to that, to let me know if I've missed any elements of it. So in relation to the broadband elements, yes, you are right, you're absolutely right that it depends on, certainly on the service. So what I would say is the services that we provide in, which I mentioned at the beginning with regards to inequalities, those services do not require broadband. We will utilise it if, if service users do have that. We do have services, all of our technology that works on that front also has roaming SIM that we provide as part of the service. And when I say roaming SIM, it essentially means that it's a SIM card that will lock on to the strongest signal from any particular provider of services. And actually, the technology that we use doesn't require a massive amount of bandwidth for that. So that allows us to utilise that technology well. And that has very much been designed along that, along that route. So quite rightly, other services where it's actually activation from the individuals themselves, whether they're going on a web-based service or other things and utilising some of those digital channels naturally, they do require both their own equipment and access to the internet. What we do see sometimes is that, again, broadband not always necessary, 4G can support that. And an awful lot of people do have smartphones, but that's not ignoring the fact that there are inequalities and there are people without smartphones and without access to broadband. Prior to that, we did have, prior to COVID, we had programmes out there to allow free access and training for people out in Liverpool in a variety of different areas. Obviously, COVID has made that incredibly difficult for us, but we are reviewing that provision at this point in time because it is very important and I accept that there is still a gap existing there. So in terms of the final part of your question there, which is fibre versus putting masks up, it's a bit of a debate. I won't bore you with the technological part of it, but actually 5G, Liverpool is right at the forefront of 5G and it's been tested in areas of the city, particularly in a deprived area of the city. And what that technology offers us is actually in some ways, a much faster broadband opportunity than, than what you will get through fibre. So I think technology is moving so, so very quickly, it'd be very difficult to say whether it would be better to have masks or better to have fibre. I think it's a debate that will continue for some time. At the moment, we're taking a blended approach.
Thanks, Dave. Can we bring Martin in, please? Martin?
Yeah, I just wanted to raise a couple of questions, which, and one's a suggestion, really, I suppose. I'm interested really particularly around the support in the home and the telecare. So one of the issues that I was interested in is to offer some things also on prescription. What, do we know what the target number is that we would like to see? Because the numbers would give us an idea of how well are we promoting it? Are we doing it in the right places? How are we encouraging the access? And then we could do something to measure what the impact of that is in terms of it takes strain off particularly primary care and secondary care. And I suppose the second bit linked to that is, is that I think as Dave, as a whole range of different things happening and technology is moving at such a pace, I just wonder whether we need something which is a bit of an overarching sort of strategy around that across health and social care, around how we're embracing the technologies. Because as David said, I was going to mention the stuff around 5G, but you know, obviously he's already covered that. But it's a bit about how do we bring that together?
Okay, Matt? Do you want me to respond? Thank you, Chair. So essentially, Martin, there isn't a target for telecare technology. We don't, we don't have one of those, but I take your point entirely. I think there's a, there's a slightly different blend between how we provide this technology, whether it's through the social care element, which I think very much has the ability to have a target, as opposed to the health side through, through general practice, which is very reactionary in terms of having a patient sat in front of a GP or actually some of our specialist nursing staff who also have access to that, where they can actually assess a patient and at that point, if they feel that technology is necessary for them to live independently at home or support them, that it's immediately available on prescription. So I think, yes, there's something that we can take away, Martin, and have a look at what that target would be. And I think there's a wider piece of work around how that blends in with current care packages and how we really get that right in terms of how it supports the individual as a whole.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Councillor Corbett?
Just one, oh, you too, yeah. Just one back for Dave as well, really. In terms of the actual digital infrastructure and the devices, et cetera, just to make you aware, which you might already know, there's a, there's a group called Electronics Watch, Electronics Watch. It's a global group that looks at the ethics around this in terms of conflict-free, if you're looking at, and the various bits and pieces, sorry to show my ignorance, that goes into digital provision. But they're really good and they give, they can show very quickly where there's good practice and where there isn't across the globe as well. So if there's, it's, it's a, it's a good backdrop for you to know anyway. It's called Electronics Watch.
Thank you very much. I'd be happy to follow up on that.
Thank you. Councillor Kemp?
Yes, there are so many gadgets around now. My wife has got a Fitbit, which connects to a watch of some sort, which connects to her computer. And I don't know what she does, but if we could just min it, she has gone down the dress size, that would be, oh, you've got one as well. But a lot of people have these things and I don't think everyone knows what to do with them. Perhaps we have some simple advice on that. But actually, the more serious point, apart from my wife's dress size, is in fact, could you bring, could the CCG bring a report back sometime about social prescribing? Because I would really like to know how that is being used as a tool. And following on from what Martin said, could it be used more for this sort of thing? So I'd be very interested to see, could it be used for letting people go out for a meal twice a week, that sort of thing, if we're thinking loneliness is a factor? So I'd like to see something about an imaginative use of social prescribing and what we're doing if we could.
Definitely. You've reminded me of a remark I was going to make in answer to one of your earlier questions, which was to say that the increase in social prescribing that is, has happened throughout the pandemic, but is increasing as well with the development of the network, primary care networks is really significant. So yes, the CCG will definitely be happy to do that. I think Carol Hill is listening and probably started the report already. So at that point, any other questions for Dave? So we note that and agree that update. Thank you very much, Dave. Excellent. Okay, so do we do any other business? No, we, Peter says we're not allowed any other business. Excellent. Okay, so I will conclude then. The next meeting of this board is on Thursday, the 22nd of December. Thank you all for attending. I would just close by remarking that the uncertainty that faces all of us over the next few months is very stressful and it's affecting all of us in some way. And I think it's really important that we all remember that everyone we come into contact is being affected in some way and that we will only get through this together by remembering that and not just by following the guidance, but by being kind and thoughtful and patient with each other when we do so, which I know everyone, I know the communities and the people of Liverpool are more than capable of doing that. And I thank them for it and I wish you all good health. Keep well. Thank you. Goodbye.
Thank you, Chair.